This is Super Council.
Hundred percent.
Coming on. All right. Welcome, everybody that's joined us here in council chambers. We actually called the meeting to order a little early. We had a closed session to talk about some personnel matters, so we've completed that. And I'll ask council if we could make a motion to come out of that closed session.
May I move that we certify a closed session in that we talked about only what we convened the closed session to talk about?
Second. A motion made in second that we certify that closed session. Questions or comments? Seeing none, Judy, please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote is seven to zero.
Okay, and then, like I say, we are officially reconvened, and if we could all please rise, I'll lead you in the invocation. The pleasure be it.
Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and for the many blessings we've received in our city. Tonight, we ask for your special blessing on the Ball family as they recover from what none of us would dream of. We ask for them to be surrounded by their neighbors, by their loved ones, and by this city to recognize the tragedy that's occurred. We ask, as always, for your protection and your oversight on our public safety employees and those who serve in our military, especially those who serve in foreign lands that keep us safe as we live here in the safety of our country. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. Motion.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fairly straightforward meeting this evening. We don't have any special presentations. We do have a series of public hearings. Right now is the audience for visitors, so if you're here to speak on one of the public hearings, please wait until that public hearing comes up and then you can speak. If not, then I'll hear from -- if there's something else that you would like to address with council, now is that time. I'll open the audience for visitors. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the audience for visitors and ask council for approval of the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes of our regular session by April 25, 2016.
Second. A motion made in second that we approve those minutes. Questions or comments on those? Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote is seven to zero.
Okay, and work session?
May I move that we adopt the minutes of our work session of the same day?
Second. Okay, a motion made in second that we adopt those also. Judy, please.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote is seven to zero.
Okay, so now we're at the section of the meeting for public hearings, and the first is an ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds for refunding of certain outstanding bonds of the city for up to $900,000 for capital improvements. Randy, would you like to?
I'll recap it briefly and would point out to you that David Rose is here from Davenport. And Mr. Rose is right there, sitting to his right. It's Mr. Bausch from Sands Anderson, sitting in for Dan Siegel there, our bond counsel on this. And our finance director, Teresa Owens, is here as well. Council members will recall from discussion of the past several meetings that there are two issues, two things, I want to use the word issue here to confuse it, two things happening at roughly the same time. Your adopted capital improvements plan had four relatively small projects as part of that approval for new debt financing in the upcoming year. That was reflected in the recommended budget. Subsequent to that, or pretty much at the same time that budget was going to bed, we were made aware from our financial advisors, Davenport, of a potential opportunity to refinance some existing debt. There are two portions to this debt issue. One is the refinancing, and while the numbers are never finalized until they're finalized, at your last meeting, you got a briefing on what it would do to do a negotiated sale as opposed to a full public sale, and we moved forward with your consent towards the full public sale. At that time, the estimated total savings over the existing term of the refinanced loan was approximately $1.4 million. Additionally, and then taken together, we still had, as part of the budget in the CIP, the new debt for the new four projects. Essentially, when you wrap those two things together, this public hearing tonight is for the new debt portion, what we anticipate, based on what we heard last time, is that should you approve this, and should we, this being the new bond financing following public hearing, and should we then proceed with the refinancing at the anticipated savings, we should be able to essentially, while taking on new debt, our debt service over the period will actually be lower. So our total debt service responsibility, which is principal and interest over the term of the loan, would actually be lower than it is right now by approximately $500,000. And that's true, that if you did not do the new funding projects, then it would be lower by approximately $1.4 million.
In the term, can you just make sure that everybody understands the term of the loan is no change, right?
There would be no change to the term of the loan associated with the refinancing, so if there's 10 years left on the note, it would still be 10 years. This isn't going from a 10-year mortgage to a 30-year mortgage. This is staying within the term. And the terms on the new debt are not the traditional super-long terms because of the nature of their size. They're geared specifically to the type of improvement it is, but in terms of the refinancing, it won't be any extension.
And the reason that that's important is, one, it's apples for apples, and, two, that, you know, obviously, when we look into the future, new schools and the like, further down the road, that obviously is something that we always want to consider. And Mr. Vice Mayor, you got a question?
Just clarification, make sure that we all understand the terminology. By debt service, you mean what we pay each time period, whether it's monthly, yearly. So we will not increase that at all, and we'll have this extra money. I want to make sure that we --
That's correct.
Everybody understands that.
We will be, if you approve this, we'll be increasing the amount of debt we have, but because of the refinancing, our total payments, both principal and interest over the term, will actually be lower.
Okay, wanted to make sure that everybody understood the term debt service, because I didn't until I got y'all to explain it to me.
There is a difference between debt and debt service.
Right.
One is how much, to use a house example, when you, if you buy a house for $250,000, when you buy it and finance it, they give you a statement that says if you take it to term, your total principal and interest will be this, and then, in our context, that's debt service.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that was understood.
And then, last but not least, to make sure that everything stays transparent, three of the four CIP projects are school-related, being the high school track, which has been there since 1977, '76, actually, the primary school HVAC, and the high school HVAC, and then a small amount for some improvements to that at Messick Point. So, any other questions of council before I open the public hearing?
Okay.
Then I'll open the public hearing and ask for comments from citizens.
Okay.
Seeing no comments, I'll close the public hearing and ask for consideration by council.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of general obligation and refunding bonds in the City of Pecosin, Virginia, providing for the form, details, and payment thereof, and providing for the refunding of certain general obligation bonds of the city.
Motion made in second that we approve this ordinance and modify this financing. Questions or comments? Final questions?
Just a comment.
Go ahead.
This is just, I don't know what the word is, describing phenomenal. You do some of your CIP projects and lower your amount of money by those dollars is just phenomenal job, fantastic. Good job for everybody involved with that.
Well, that everybody, and that's a good comment, and I will say that everybody that's involved in that is our entire city staff, most of our, most of all of our employees, the schools themselves, who've handled money extremely well through a very difficult economic time, and so starting to see the benefits of being a good financial steward. So, that said, Judy, please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote is seven to zero.
The second public hearing this night is for receipt of bids in ordinance conveying a certain utility easement for continued provision of natural gas service to 48 South Lawson Road.
I've received one bid.
Okay.
Which is [inaudible].
Thank you.
And it is from Virginia Natural Gas. He said, "Virginia Natural Gas would like to bid a dollar to have the gas main installed at the property of 48 South Lawson Road in Pecosin," which they would need to obtain the easement from the city.
Need to reappropriate that dollar?
[laughing]. It fits about $3.
Okay, I'm sorry to make light of it, but that's, this is standard for utility easements. All right, so with that said, we do have a bid for a dollar to continue that gas, natural gas service and provide that right of way. Any questions of council? If not, I'll open the public hearing on this matter. Okay, seeing no speakers, I'll close the public hearing and ask for consideration by council.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance to the City of Pecosin, Virginia, conveying a certain utility easement to Virginia Natural Gas, with Virginia Natural Gas in the amount of $1 inserted in Section 1, 2, and 3.
Second. Okay, a motion made in second that we approve this ordinance and provide a natural gas service, continued natural gas service to this location. Questions or comments?
I think it's just important to note that that's been there for a while. It's not something new. It's just, it had a temporary easement, I believe, for emergency purposes, yeah, yes.
Thank you for the clarification.
And as I understand it, there's no additional digging or anything else. We're just approving the easement that --
That's correct.
They've already put the stuff in on a temporary.
That's correct.
And also, they will pay for all of the advertising costs.
Right.
So. Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote is seven to zero.
Okay, thank you very much. The next public hearing is a little different here. This is the school board appointments, and tonight is the reading of the names. Is that correct?
Yes.
And what's important about this evening is that, basically, it becomes the cutoff for application to the school board. These are the names that council will consider. So, when I open the public hearing, if there's somebody that has not applied, you know, that wishes to be considered, now is that time. So with that said, there's no action that's going to be taken by council. I will open that public hearing and ask for input, actually, you should read the names, and then I'll open the public hearing.
For the Western Precinct, under consideration is Ann L. Rollins, and under the Eastern Precinct is Jennifer Mosteloff.
Okay.
And so now I will open that public hearing to see if there are other names that need to be considered. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and there's no action to be taken on this item this evening, and I'm sure we will see this in the very near future. As we head down the agenda, we're in unfinished business, and this is the second reading and final adoption of the 2016-2017 annual financial plan. There's a series of ordinances that we need to go through. We've had a previous public hearing on this. We've had a council work session. Does council need to be refreshed on the budget at all? Okay? Yes?
If I could, not to refresh, but just to point out to council members and the public, there are four relatively minor changes proposed. They're outlined in the staff report, page one, and they are reflected in the ordinances behind it. They are, as follows: An increase in state funding for the library, $4,569, which needs to be used to support library. Traditionally, we've used it in the way that it's most common for books, materials, et cetera, like that for the library. So the budget includes both a revenue plus-up and a library plus-up in those line items. Second, a decrease in the anticipated cost for animal control, given the fact that our population as a percentage of the total is going down, thanks in small part to the work of pause, or no small thanks to, I should say. Additionally, we got a last-minute meeting at the end of the general assembly session increase in the $599 funding for police, and since we've already got the police budget set, we're proposing that we take both the $599 additional money, since we already have a sufficient budget, and the decrease in animal control, and put that into the contingency reserve. So, those are the cumulative changes, and they are reflected appropriately in the resolution and the ordinances where they need to be.
All right, council, somebody prepared to make a motion on the resolution amending the annual, 2016-2017 annual financial plan?
May I move that we adopt a resolution amending Resolution Number 4019, approving the adoption of the proposed FY 2016-17 annual financial plan for the City of Pecosin.
Second. A motion made in second that we approve the resolution adopting the annual financial plan. Questions or comments? Seeing none, Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote is seven to zero.
Very good. Next item is an ordinance establishing the real estate tax rate.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance to lay a $1.07 levy per $100 assessed value on all real estate in the City of Pecosin, Virginia, for the general operation of the various departments of the city government.
Second. A motion made in second that we approve that ordinance. Questions or comments?
No change is the only comment.
No change, that's correct.
Okay, any other thing else? Okay, Judy, please.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote is seven to zero.
Okay, next is an ordinance establishing the personal property, watercraft, and privately-owned trailers and mobile home tax rates.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance to lay a $4.15 levy on all personal property, a 10 thousandth of a dollar levy on all watercraft, a $1.50 levy on all privately-owned camping trailers and motor homes, and a $1.07 levy on all vehicles without motor power used or designed to be used as manufactured homes in the City of Pecosin, Virginia, for the general operation of the various departments of the city government.
Sir, second?
Second.
A motion made in second that we approve those ordinances, again, with no changes in any of the rates. Questions or comments? Judy, please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
No.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote is six to one.
Okay, and finally, the ordinance appropriating funds to the various governmental funds.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance to appropriate funds to the various governmental funds of the City of Pecosin, Virginia, for FY 2016-17.
Second.
Second.
A motion made in second that we approve the ordinance appropriating the funds raised to the various governmental funds. Questions or comments? Judy, please.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote is seven to zero.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. City Manager, and Finance Director, and city, well, basically, especially to the leaders of each of the departments in the city. Great budget year, easiest budget year I think I've ever experienced. Thank you for making that possible, and as well, I'm glad and pleased to hear that we're doing something back this year in terms of raises, so great to hear that. So, as we move forward under new business, we've got a resolution certifying the employees' contribution rates for VRS.
Council will recall, and Teresa can speak to this in more depth than I can, but as we went through the recession, the state provided for itself and its localities an option of sort of stepping down temporarily your obligation to VRS. Instead of having to fund 100% of your obligation, you could do a smaller rate, and then each two years, that amount would go up till you got to 100. This continues the practice that we began a few years ago. I would recall for you, in our mid-year review this year, we found that we had sufficient money coming out of the last year, that we went ahead with your consent, obviously, and went off and paid the 100% rate for that year. We paid the difference. We'll need to pay it at some point anyway, so we're proceeding on the track to get to 100% every year, and we recommend this to you to continue what we've done, but we're mindful that if sufficient funds exist, we'll come back to you with a resolution to make up the difference so that we're not having to pay it out over a period of years.
Very well. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
May I move that we adopt a resolution certifying the employer contribution rates for county, cities, towns, school divisions, and other political subdivisions.
Second. A motion made in second that we certify this, that we approve this resolution certifying the employer contribution rates for the Virginia retirement system. Questions or comments? Judy, please.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote is seven to zero.
The next item is a resolution establishing the summer city council meeting schedule. Is there a motion on this?
Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution canceling the first meeting of the months of June, July, and August 2016.
Second. A motion made in second that we go to the summer schedule based on business normally declining. So, questions or comments? I don't really see any, and you're really not going to ask about this, right?
That's my lady. That's my lady. I think we ought to be here all summer.
All right, Judy, please.
Well, they could be optional.
We can find something for them to do. Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote is seven to zero.
Okay, finally, comments of the city manager?
Two items. First, just a thank you, as you all do with great regularity. We thank the community groups that work with us to make this community so special. I'd like to specifically thank one, and that's the Thursday Night Kiwanis Group, for working with the city recently on repainting, not, shouldn't say repainting, first time ever painting the guardrail there in front of the Farm Fresh Shopping Center. They came to us a couple of months ago and said, "What can we do to help spruce up the corridor?" And they're working with us on the trees at the micro park and already putting their thinking caps on to other things. But I did want to thank them for that specifically, since I was the one that sort of got them into it, and they did a wonderful job. Additionally, the other item, and it's noted in your package, two meetings ago, council requested, Mr. Green requested, during board directives, that staff give some review to concerns that were being expressed to him and to others with regard to driving habits of persons using terrorist drive, particularly those using it as a cut-through to the school, but certainly not all of those people, and not constrained solely to those people. What you see here is a memo that outlines what we, as staff, think would work best to address those concerns. We have discussed them. Mr. Green and I stood out there together and talked this through, as well, as you know, he's quite knowledgeable as regards to roads and traffic control. But as we stood out there, we could find, if you really looked hard and you knew it was there, that there used to be a yellow line on that road, and it's so hard to see that literally you have to know it's there and stand on top of it to see it. So, you'll see in your package, there is a depiction. If you look top, the top is Odd Road, and that existing stop sign and stop bar, which is the very thick white line immediately adjacent to it, are already there. So what we're talking about in this is a double yellow line painting from that stop bar through this portion terrorist drive down to where the existing island is now, which would be spruced up so that you can see it. The single biggest issue and concern, as I understand it, is folks coming towards that intersection and actually shortcutting and not going around that island, but actually turning into the oncoming traffic lane to shortcut that island, which is extremely dangerous. So we think that painting of the yellow lines will help. We also have depicted here changing that intersection control from a yield sign to two stop signs with the painted stop bar. So that's the first issue in response to Mr. Green's request. And the second issue highlighted in the memorandum is an issue that we discussed some time ago, but no final decision was ever made, which was brought to your attention first by Mrs. Crawford. Folks that lived in long bunting lane and were served by it had been speaking with her, expressing their concerns about the speed of traffic. And at that time, we talked about possible traffic calming. The simplest, least impactful in terms of snowplows and espants is the consideration of an always-stop intersection. Right now, what we've depicted here, and there's a depiction of it as an attachment, is that Floyd. You certainly could choose one of the other two, but we thought that if you were going to do one, Floyd made sense. It's essentially in the middle, and also, you'll see in the memo what we think each one will cost, and so, not, I didn't wish to speak for either Mr. Green or Mrs. Crawford, but we introduced the issue, and if the council has direction for staff on this, we'll be glad to take it and execute it appropriately.
Counsel?
I just wondered what the traffic count is coming off Lodge versus what you have there with Floyd.
There's a lot more coming off of Lodge than coming off of Floyd, and the turn-off of Lodge is very, very, is tighter.
Yeah.
I, while I want speed bumps, I think speed bumps will be a great idea because I think that would slow down traffic, and I think that having stop signs is going to make a lot of people miserable and angry, and we're going to get some complaints. If it will help slow down traffic, something needs to be done on bunting lane. So I think if this is a good idea, I think I'd really like to see something happen to slow down traffic, and if this is the best we can do, I'm willing to take this instead of nothing.
Okay, so how do we formally do this? Could I just ask that we add these to the next agenda and we move forward?
Sure.
Is that okay with council? In that way, we don't surprise anybody. In that way, we don't surprise anybody, you know, I'd be, you know, it, it looks to me from what our information here is, that we already know the feelings of the neighborhood and, at Terrace. I, I think previously, we, we knew the feelings of the people on Bunting Lane, but I want to make sure that we give them time to understand this, so, before we approve it, so, if that's okay with council, I'd like to see it on the next council agenda.
Can I, may I, Mr. Mayor, could I ask one question of clarification?
Mm-hmm.
To Ms. Crawford and to the council, we had presented the bunting solution as Floyd, would you prefer it to be a, a different-
I think bunting makes, I mean, Floyd makes the most sense, I've looked at it, and it does make the most sense, if you're going to do stop signs.
Thank you.
I just don't, I, I, I guess I'm, my question is, is making somebody slow down at a stop sign going to make them angry, so angry that they're going to speed up after, you, I don't know what the psychology is behind, because it's a straight shot, so, I'm, I'm worried about it, but I think, at the same time, it's a good idea.
All right, so, we're talking about the three stop signs, right?
I think if you're worried about complaints, you'd get, I had a lot more complaints with a speed bump.
Oh, yes, oh, yes.
Everybody would be angry about those.
Okay, so, like I said, the only thing I would ask is that if we could, you know, for those that, particularly for those that live on the road, we could somehow communicate to them, hey, this is what we're, we're talking about doing.
We can, we can send letters.
I take from, I take from the, the petition on Terrace that, you know, I think that's well-worded and, and documented, so, I think we've got that buy-in, so.
So, you, you don't want us to re-notify the people on Terrace, or you would like us to?
Sure, re-notify them, but-
Okay.
You can, on theirs, you can say that we are in receipt of your petition, okay, so that they don't think that we just-
Okay.
-need it twice.
We will take care of it, sir.
That way, they can, they can come and talk if they feel strongly one way or another.
Okay, thank you very much.
And we will have an opportunity for public hearing on Bunting Lane.
It'll be during, no, it'll just be an audience for visitors.
Right.
Yeah. I'll make it clear.
I think we need that, okay, we, we know what all the residents along Terrace Drive felt, we got a whole bunch of signatures.
Yep.
We haven't had that opportunity for those on Bunny Lane, and, you know, my feeling is that this would slow down traffic, okay, it definitely will, okay, but the first two or three who get, who get tickets because they didn't come to a full and complete stop at the stop sign, okay, might generate a lot of conversation, and so, I think we need the public comment for the neighborhood on that.
I'll make sure that we, that we bring that out at the next meeting, that we talk specifically, if they would like to address this particular issue, talk to an audience for visitors.
This will, this will slow it down, you know.
Okay, great. Anything else, Randy? That's all I have, sir, thank you.
All right, Councilman Vernal.
Two things, one, just another compliment to, to the staff for providing us with a budget that meets a lot of pent-up needs, and without raising taxes, and that's really a, a pleasantry that we haven't had in, in several years, at least meeting the needs, so, that's great. The other thing, just remind everybody, Saturday is our annual Kiwanis barbecue, down in front of Wells Fargo, and we raise quite a bit of money for that, that we pump back into a variety of city charities and organizations, so, come on out and have some good barbecue.
Thank you very much. Councilman Green?
Just to go along with the vein that Randy was talking about, thanking the service clubs today, the Exchange Club completed putting the cat eyes, the blue markers, on all the houses in the city. We put, two weeks ago, they put down about 100, we ran out before we could even get to the eastern end of the city, so, this time, we started in the eastern end with 200 more, and I think we've got about 50 left, so, we've put 250 cat eyes down, and they'll be good until it snows.
How's your back?
They plow them off.
How's your back? How's your back?
Hurts.
Councilman Ayer?
I just echo and everything everyone-
You're saying, put one there.
What everyone else has said so far, and also, in April, just wanted to bring this to everyone's attention, the community development department issued 65 permits for jobs total over 1.6 million bucks, that's a lot, that's good stuff.
That's good growth. Okay. All right. Bud?
No, I'd just like to second the remarks made by Councilman Vernal relative to the staff and their fine work on this budget, we did a really super job.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Just thank you all for your good work, and I know Randy and I have had this conversation about, you know, Bunting Lane, trying to figure out a solution, and I thank you for, for working with me on this, I know nothing is going to make everybody happy, but, thank you.
Nothing additional.
Okay, the only thing I'll, I'll bring up, and mostly to inform council, we did take a trip out the other day with, to Cow Island, with, and I think I mentioned it last time, we're going to pulse back and find out if we've made a dent in their policy to allow human beings on there with the birds and the wildlife. We will let you know the outcome of that, so, but I think we made some very good headway, but we need to pulse back. Echo all the comments here, I think it's been a, I will tell you, I'm shocked that in 35 minutes, we did a budget, a refinancing, it is, it is that good, so, appreciate, and that, that comes also from serving with a good council that communicates, so, appreciate everything you do, appreciate staff, as always, and I'll take a motion to adjourn.
No move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.